Call our town council meeting for December 2022 to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the five of the United States of America, through the republic of the citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as small.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll begin with the November 2022 financial report. Irene, I think you have some good news for us, so please deliver.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've been talking about this for a few months now and finally received information with respect to our November local, I'm sorry, there's a very big echo. Okay, it just got muted.
By the way, I see that Joel is now joining us by phone, so thank you, Joel.
Yeah, it was the echo, sorry about that.
That's okay, that's okay, thank you.
All five of us are present, good.
Wonderful. So we did receive our November local income tax distribution payment, so it's basically the municipalities portion of the county's tax that we all pay. And it came in at $1,242,058. So as you know, the November distribution payment helps to inform how the rest of the year is going to shape up. The November distribution payment helps to inform how the rest of the year is going to shape up. So a few years ago or so, the state got out of the business of providing any estimates for how the rest of the year would tick and tie for municipalities and instead advised municipalities to take averages over the last previous three years. And then filling that information out through, you know, kind of very sophisticated spreadsheet, and I say that facetiously, then we're able to anticipate what the rest of the payments should look like for our year, which comes to approximately $3.4 million for the year. Again, this is just an estimate. And the state alongside providing the information about this, this particular November payment, made two additional points when they reported out the information where they said the tax years 2020 and 2021, as you all know, were very complex due to COVID and essentially the related, the government payments that were sent out, the benefits to businesses and to various individuals. And while we don't know as a town how many residents received these types of payments, we can't discount the possibility that it will have a tax distribution impact. And the second thing that the state wanted to point out was given that there is a federal tax benefit that incentivizes earlier tax payment, payments, it's getting better and better to provide more accurate distributions for the months of November, February, May, and June, which effectively means that the reconciling payments, which occur in other months in the year, should be lower in the future. So they're getting better with respect to these quarterly, they're not quarterly, but other payments. And that way, our spreadsheet should become a little bit more accurate. Nonetheless, we don't know exactly how it's all going to pan out. We're assuming it's about $3.4 million in total. And that the, we also are seeing that the trend for these three-year averages is increasing. So again, there's, there's a lot of moving parts, but essentially this, the budget that we had was $3.182 million. So of course, the, the difference of $221,000 is, well, the spreadsheet is coming into a little bit higher, our budget is a little bit lower, and yet that's a good position to be in. That coupled with the fact that our expenditures are on target with the exception of civic affairs and community programs, it puts us in a great position overall. So we'll just keep working to refine these projections. Of course, we'll, we'll keep reporting those out accordingly, but for now, it, we're in a, in a really good position. I wanted to point out two items, though, just with respect to, to where we are. I mentioned just a minute ago that, you know, with the exception of civic affairs and then also the consulting water management program, those two areas have run over in terms of our budget, but that doesn't necessarily mean that in, in the case of civic affairs and water manage, it's a good thing that there's, there, that there's more events going on and we're oversubscribed with respect to our consultant. But there will be a time when need, when it needs to be trued up, which I will, will have a further discussion on in another time. Another item is that we had set aside $50,000 for town office and town hall renovations. Thus far, $21,000 has been allocated and spent to paint. And you may have seen that there's some freshening up in town hall and then the entryway, the foyer, patching some walls, some bathroom light fixtures and tile and some kitchen updates. And what I want to do is request of the town council that we essentially take $25,000 from the, the capital budget that had been set aside for this effort and, and move it over to operating funds so that we can pay for the, the refurbitions thus far. There will be a phase two for that. There's further discussions as to other updates that will take place in the town office, but for now, that, that would be my request. So I said a lot, if there's any questions with respect to the November distribution payment or other comments about the other items related to civic affairs and all of that, then, you know, let me know.
Thank you. I have a comment and a question. Just to make sure we're all clear on this, the, in the November payment that we get, which we've received, there really is two parts, a reconciliation payment. There's also the first estimated payment where we will be then receiving further estimated payments from the state in February, May, and then 60% in June.
June.
So we, we actually have, it's not just an estimate, we have a very complete understanding, don't we, of the income tax revenue that we're going to be receiving across these payments? And there's still a few hundred thousand dollars trickles in through other, through, through other reimbursements, and maybe that's what you were referring to. But what I kind of consider in my own mind, and I felt this when I was treasurer, was sort of the backbone, if you will, of what the town gets arises from the reimbursement payment in November and these four estimated payments.
That's right.
And it's in November when we know exactly what all of those are, all the way out through June. In other words, we know exactly, so, so that's what I'm saying. I, I understand at the margin, there's a little bit of uncertainty, but I do want us to be clear that the great bulk is in fact known, and that does give us comfort that we're going to get money that's in the range of what we had estimated at the outset of creating the budget for this fiscal year.
Yes, thanks. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. I, I was only trying to convey what you just said, that there's a margin of error here.
Right, right, no, that's always the case, but when we get to November, we can breathe this year, as we have the last several years, a sigh of relief that we're all inside the range that's perfectly, that's entirely tolerable for the town to have, and usually it's on the plus side.
It's usually on the plus side, yes.
The question I had was, I wasn't quite clear why we need to shift money from the capital to operating to pay money for the, for the renovations. I didn't, why can't we just take it from, pay from the capital account? What am I missing?
Yeah, I can jump in. The renovations we're doing are really repairs and maintenance, they're not considered capital. And so in order to
Okay.
In order to legally
Meaning, they're going to be, they're going to be expensed, it's not going to be capitalized?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Other improvements in phase two will be capitalized, there'll be long-term improvements with a useful life of over five years at, at a certain level of amount, I should say. But the, the first phase repairs we've done are not capitalized.
Right, good, okay. No, we don't, we don't need a motion, do we, or do we?
We do, we do.
Oh, we do.
Move to transfer $25,000 from the capital improvements, or capital budget, I should say, for town office improvements to the repairs and maintenance line item for the operating expenditures, that's all I need, and a, and a, a motion and a vote.
Do I hear someone willing to make a motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I can't see the screen. They can only see the fellow who can't vote.
Okay, aye.
Okay, now, aye, and, aye, okay, good, unanimous consent, great, thank you, thank you, Irene. Now, it's, it's good news, this is a big, a big deal for us in November to know that we're on track for the year, it's great. Okay, town managers' report. Are you muted, Todd?
Thank you, sorry. I'll briefly review staff activities over the last month, in addition to assisting with several major projects, including Corso Chevy Chase rezoning and redevelopment plans, the project, and the Farm Women's Market Parks Development Project, both which will be discussed in further detail tonight. Staff also met with Jason Azar of Clark Azar, who is performing for us the engineering work for both Zimmerman Park renovation project and Coquelin Run stabilization project. And we have some updates to provide to you this evening. I'm going to turn and ask Dave Walton to give you some updates after our conversation with Jason this afternoon. So Dave, could you provide the council with some updates on those two projects?
Sure, yeah, starting with Zimmerman.
Is your mic on, is it, is he recording?
It's red, it is, you can scream, it's on.
Yep, starting with Zimmerman, as you know, I guess we've sent preliminary stormwater plans to Montgomery County for review and approval. They requested some additional geotechnical work, so we hired a geotechnical engineer to come do some infiltration testing. Those results have been sent back to the county. The infiltration rates weren't great, so we're waiting on the county engineers to review those to see if they can accept the plans as they've been prepared or if they'll need to be modified. And we should hear back from them in the next few weeks.
What does modification mean?
Basically, instead of having just a pure infiltration system, it might require the installation of an underdrain pipe that connects to the existing storm drain lines that run through the park. And so if we find that the landscape infiltration devices don't de-water in time, then some of the excess water can be piped into the storm drain.
So it might mean we have to modify the project's infrastructure a bit in order to accommodate?
A bit, it's not substantial, it'll probably require the approval of a county right-of-way permit in addition to the stormwater management permit, but it shouldn't slow anything down. And then Tolbert and I are meeting with Jason and the landscape architect on Friday just to review the planting beds and make sure that we're all on the same page with maintenance requirements for new plantings that they're proposing, make sure that all the tree protection issues that we've identified are incorporated into the plans. And so once we have that meeting, the LA will work with Jason to develop 65% plans that they anticipate getting to us next Friday for us to review. And then once we sign off on those, they'll be able to proceed with doing the final construction drawings, which he anticipates getting over to us sometime in February.
Okay.
And then, once we get those and everybody's okay with how the project looks, we can explore options for either writing an existing parks contract to identify a contractor that we're comfortable with to install it for us, or we can send it out for competitive bid, which would take a little bit longer. There's a little bit more uncertainty with that, but we're hopeful that we can write an existing contract and be under construction sometime probably in May.
Thanks, Dave.
We have a rate? Irene, you wanted to ask a question?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So the, if indeed we need an underground pipe, is, I'm just wondering how much time it will take to get county approval for that, given the amount of infrastructure that's under, I mean, is it similar to what was discussed before in terms of, you know, the very, this was the previous iteration of the project where all of the underground piping and we thought, well, that might be a little bit overkill in terms of drainage and what was necessary, but can you speak to that or is that still, you know, to, to be determined?
Yeah, that's done by a separate division of DPS. And usually, usually that's sort of a, I mean, they review the plans, but it's not something that takes a lot of time. It's pretty common to, for the county to review plans to tie in drainage into the county storm drain system, so it's something that they're comfortable with and shouldn't really impact how the project proceeds.
And, and so therefore, there shouldn't be a delay with the opening. Right, right now, you're still thinking that it will be September potentially that this project will be complete. The reason I ask is there are separate discussions going on with respect to a potential grand opening event for the park itself that will begin in January in terms of the discussions for it. So I just want to know if I need to think about spring 2024 instead of fall 2023?
Yeah, I mean, it's probably a little too early to tell, we're obviously shooting for having it open in the fall. You know, once we determine whether that underdrain pipe is needed, all those reviews can sort of be done concurrently with the development of the construction drawings. There won't be a whole lot of uncertainty with, you know, whether it'll be approved or not, so I wouldn't anticipate, you know, any issues, but anytime you're in a permitting process, there's uncertainty and you're sort of subject to the whims of the county at this point.
Yeah, and we're hoping, though, if, if we run into some snags or some delays with permitting and some, and some tweaks to the design, one of the things that will expedite it or potentially expedite are getting this project completed or at least started would be to write a competitively big county contract. And that would, that would really streamline the process a lot if we can find someone who are, who has already bid competitively to the county and the county's accepted their contract, then we can ride that contract and get the job done pretty quickly without going through the two-month bid process.
I mean, so we go to, help me out here, we go to a contractor whom the county has already awarded a competitive project to?
Yeah, so
And we would just be presum, presuming that, that the bid that they would then submit for doing this work would also be competitive because they want a competitive bid elsewhere in the county on something else?
Yes, a lot of times the county or the parks department will sort of enter into general contracts that have line items for each component that can be involved in a park development project as far as bringing in filter or excavation or installing the curb and gutter. So there's a line item already approved for each of those components. And because that contract was competitively bid, the town has the legal ability to basically sign off on those rates.
In other words, the pricing that was determined for a particular kind of, of element, if you will, that through a competitive process, even though done elsewhere in the county, that same pricing is imported into the contract that we would have, we will deem that to be competitive.
Correct, because that contract was competitively bid for the same type or the same work.
Right.
Like, like Dave said, they have line items and unit costs for their work excavation, you know, installation of whatever, maybe under drains, all of those are line itemed in those contracts, and so they would extend those unit prices to us as well.
Gotcha, okay. That, that's, I think, a very interesting thought. Obviously, saving a couple of months and knowing the project could actually be completed at some point in the summer, early fall of 2023 and not be pushed into the winter and not actually be appreciated till the spring of 2024. For some of us, I've been living with this project for four or five years, that sounds like an interesting proposition to explore.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And then, second project is the Coquelin Run improvements. The boundary survey's been completed and Clark Azar's done a preliminary plan that they've shared with us. They will fine-tune it and anticipate having that ready to go for permitting sometime in the middle of January. It's very much in alignment with what, what they showed us before as far as installation of new riprap and sort of re-aligning that stream into its natural bedding course. We're going to share the preliminary plan and we're going to share right-of-entry agreements and maintenance easement documents with all of the private property owners that will need to sign off on the project for us to proceed, just to make sure that they're all still comfortable with proceeding with the final construction drawings and, you know, ultimately allowing us to go onto that private property to do the work in order to stabilize that right-of-way along Lynn Drive. The permitting process for the stream restoration work, Jason said, is usually about three to four months because it goes up to the Maryland Department of the Environment and there's also a federal review. So if we get the plans, you know, finalized in the middle of January, you know, we're probably looking at May before we can, you know, have approval to do the work. That work should only take about three weeks once the project starts. And that's, I think, certainly a project where we'll probably ride an existing Montgomery County contract because it's pretty straightforward and we know that the county's contractors are, are able to do the work. So, that's that.
Thank you. The, the expected budget for the Coquelin Run, a hundred and something?
A hundred and, a hundred
Hundred and fifty?
Hundred, so a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty, yeah.
That range, that's what I remember.
I'll, I'll get an updated price from Jason once he finalizes that they're based on the
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Just a few more things to mention, I'll expedite my report. I think the staff discussed and addressed some issues or matters related to the town's American Rescue Plan Act policy and allocation schedule, and that will be discussed later this evening. We completed our FY24 State Aid for Police Protection Grant application. As most of you know, we, we receive a grant from the state which pays for a portion of costs associated with providing our authority police coverage in town. It basically covers the cost for our, our, the supervisor who recruits and retains and schedules the, the police officers who work 16 hours a day all year round. We attended some additional meetings, staff attended some additional meetings regarding National Flood Insurance Program and updates to that program and our assistance or participation in such a program. We continue to address parking and traffic issues around one, the school, and continued redesign of the town website, which is going well now. We're back on track and we have some really good designs and they're about to be finalized and ultimately coded where additional modifications can be made, but I'm hoping to show you something near or close to final next month, so you can see what it all looks like.
Great.
All I have for today.
Good, all right. Let me just, wow, this, on this topic, let me just add two things very quickly that are, they've been just routine, but so I'm quickly mentioning. And one is that with your help, Todd and Irene, myself, we spent a lot of time working through a public, a town crier that went out today for winter preparedness.
Thanks, Barnum, I didn't mention that, I forgot.
And we really emphasize that we are keeping an up-to-date list of service, people who are parties that are willing to shovel for on behalf of residents, because every year we find that on any given, any given sidewalk, on any given block, you know, three, four out of the seven, maybe five or six out of the seven or eight residents have done their job, the sidewalk is cleared, but one home is not. People are using that sidewalk, the sidewalk in front of that home gets icy and dangerous very quickly. So we really wanted to emphasize the importance of the resident is taking responsibility. And yes, the town will shovel if it's over six inches. We also have intervened regularly over the last several years to de-ice or shovel if it's less than six inches, but sometimes we do not. We make the call that we are not going to intervene, in which case it is up to the resident. So it is very important for them to take that, that seriously. And the other thing, because it turned out to be the most significant listserv degree of, of responses that I have seen in a long time, was that I've been in touch with the Chair of the Board of the Bethesda Fire Department, and he has agreed that in the future, when they have a Santa run, they will inform the town. And they now know how to inform the town so that we will know the timing and the route of Santa, and we will not have to go through what we went through this year. So anyway, I thought I would just mention that we were taking that up and got that done, all right. Anyway, I shouldn't say, we'll find out if in fact the message has gotten through, so we'll have to check with them next December, Todd, to make sure that they, they actually get in touch with us. We are, there is, by the way, a Santa run also sponsored by the Chevy Chase Fire Department, and they have always traditionally notified us and we've been able to put some notice out, and I presume they will still be doing that sometime between now and the 25th. So we will, the town will have two Santa runs. Anyway, okay, thank you. Now it's time for public comments, but anybody wish to make a comment at this time about any topic other than the variants which we're about to hear? Deborah, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think we should also suggest to the fire department that maybe they could play some music like Here Comes Santa Claus and not have sirens blaring, because when people hear sirens blaring, they think, oh my gosh, my neighbor's house may be on fire or somebody in the neighborhood's had a heart attack or something. And, and it really, you know, it really did upset, I think, a lot of our residents. A, a small complaint, I've been attending this Tai Chi class, which threw Chevy Chase at home, and there's this wonderful teacher who is a master in Tai Chi, he's actually studied in China, but the, but the class is geared toward body awareness and relaxation and circulation and balance and strength and all that good stuff. It's a wonderful class, but it's Wednesday mornings at 10:00. And when we went in, it was like navigating around, you know, where they were either painting or preparing to paint, and outside there were leaf blowers, which could be, you know, which were very loud. And I think that the, the instructor did a wonderful job of still getting through the instruction, you know, calm down, relax, you know, do these things for your circulation and, but, but I, there's one more class in the series and that's next Wednesday at 10:00. And I just hope that, that the staff can be aware that that class is meeting, and it would be nice if we could have some quiet. And, and I'm hoping, right now, I think the class is only supposed to be for Chevy Chase at Home members, but I'm hoping that we can, at least for next week, open it up to see if other people in the town might be interested. But anyway, so I wanted to mention that. And the other thing was snow, but you've already covered that, but I, I just want to remind people, I would much prefer to shovel six, seven inches of light fluffy snow than the hard-packed ice. And, and I think the town's aware of that, but I just wanted to remind folks of that, that it's not, the depth is, you know, the way I look at it, the depth is not so much the problem as the nature of the precipitation.
And that's true, and we take that into account, that's why we've often shoveled or de-iced even if it's only three or four inches, so we, we take that into account. Anybody else would like to make a comment? I think I need to see the full screen if there are any hands up. Anne Stooks, please, go ahead. Or is that a clap? Is that a hand or a clap, Anne?
Honestly, I'm not good with the, with the Zoom controls, sorry, I was meaning to raise a hand. I, if this is the time in the meeting that you all would like to hear from residents about the Corso development, I'm happy to speak now or hold comments for later.
No, no, this is the time to speak.
Okay, so thank you to the council. As you know, I live on Woodside Place and we sent another letter to the council from Woodside Place residents commenting on the revised rezoning application from Corso. Thank you very much. It has been pointed out to us that we do see now how the restriction on vehicular access to our street does, is a covenant that runs with the land, so thank you, that's a very, that's a comfort to, to have that pointed out. But there remain concerns, as we put in the letter, about building height. It seems that the very tallest buildings are closest to Woodside Place, and we support the town's effort to try to get those buildings lowered at least to four stories, not five stories. One additional observation, it does seem like the plans have called for one of the buildings to be moved closer to the property at 6925 Woodside Place. Originally, the drawing showed a 60-foot side setback, it now seems to have been reduced to 45 feet. So to have a five-story building 45 feet from one's property is, is not what any of us would choose, frankly. The sidewalk connection, you know, this was an issue that the town requested and Corso seems to have just ignored. So we would hope to have, that the town would continue to press that issue. It was an issue that we thought was resolved. One of our neighbors took a lot of time to study the traffic study that Corso included, and it, it does raise questions that there, that Corso seems to contend that its proposed new use will result in fewer cars coming in and out of that property than the four-H had. And we wonder whether that is realistic. They're going to have a number of employees and full-time, round-the-clock people coming in and out of there, even if their residents don't drive a lot anymore. We, we wondered if the town would like to take a Uh, we, we wondered if the town would like to take a closer look at that because a traffic light might really benefit town residents to prevent cut-throughs, uh, turning into Rosemary and cutting up Meadow Lane for people to go south. I mean, pardon me, for people to go north to get on the Beltway after work. The final point I wanted to make, and this is in our letter, I don't mean to be redundant. The concern, the overriding concern that we have is Corso seems to be ignoring the town's concerns or at least paying lip service. You know, I, we really thought that letter that they wrote on December fifth was insufficient to address the town's concerns. And, uh, I mean, at worst it was, um, inaccurate at, or at, at, at best it was inaccurate and then at worst it was deliberately misleading to, to characterize the town, the building heights as lower near the properties, near, near town residents. So I don't know how much power the town council has to force some of these issues or to be more persuasive on some of these issues. I don't know. These are Montgomery County decisions and, and we realize that. But I, I would, I would hate for, for the Corso to just continue to ignore some of these issues that the town has quite reasonably raised. So, um, those, 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 that covers the comments. I do see one of my neighbors is also here on the line. I have a question to the extent that the town can address it. Do we know the timeline? For instance, will there be public hearings or, uh, opportunities for people to attend hearings at the Montgomery County level? Um, so if there is any insight, uh, that the town might have on those questions of town resident participation in, um, county meetings about these issues or whether, you know, or whether that might be perceived as counterproductive. Uh, I, I, I'd be interested to hear about that. So that, that might.
Thank you. Thank you, Anne, for those comments. I'll, I'll, I'll respond to the last point just to, because we, we do have that information. The, um, we will be submitting a letter, uh, tomorrow, which will then accompany the comments from the planning staff back to the developer on Friday. The developer will then issue another set of, a second submission, okay, a second revised submission on December twenty-third. That will then be the basis on which the planning staff will prepare their full report, which will go to the planning board for a public hearing at the beginning of February. I think it's February second or third or something like that. And that will be an opportunity for the town to testify, and I believe that's also an opportunity for any residents to testify. So that's your first opportunity as an individual, if you wish to appear before a county forum. The second opportunity will arise some period of time later, uh, in front of the hearing examiner. The, the county board, the, the planning board's recommendation is only that. It's a recommendation. And it goes to the hearing examiner that then runs, as I understand it, almost an adjudicatory kind of process. It takes, you know, the, the hearing examiner will take evidence. Uh, she will listen to everything, including the recommendation from the planning department, planning board, uh, but also recommendations or further concerns or whatever other issues there are that are raised by the town of Chevy Chase, any of the other municipalities in the area, or by any residents who wish to testify. The hearing examiner then makes a decision, but that decision has to be, uh, ratified by the county council. Not by the county executive, but by the county council. And the county council will have another public hearing at that point. I think it's fair to say that if the hearing examiner has gone through the whole process and she's comfortable and made her decision, it takes a lot to overturn or modify that decision at the time you go to the county council. But it is a final opportunity if the community feels there's still some issue that is really prominent and has not given, given fair treatment. So those are the three points of intervention. The, uh, the public hearing of the planning board, testifying before the hearing examiner, and finally in front of the county council. The hearing examiner, I don't know the date, but probably sometime in March or April. Uh, and then she has to take time to prepare everything. I don't know when it would then go to the county council sometime a month or two after that, I suppose.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Good. You're very welcome. Any other comments? If you want to speak, if you, you don't have to raise your hand, Adam, I think. But if you want to speak, you're going to need to go over to the microphone. Oh, you're fine. Okay, good. We also have your letter and thank you very much for that. Good. Okay. All right. I don't see any other hands up. So with that, I will close the public comment period. And we will now move to our variance hearing. Um, and, uh, Ron, do you want to start us off? Oh, hi. Great. Okay, indeed. We have four council members in the room and Irene is, is, is zooming. Ron, do you want to first set out for us the process that we'll be undertaking here tonight for the benefit of our commissioners?
Yes. The staff have submitted a report into the record. We won't waste time by reading that report as all council members have had an opportunity to see it. The report does not represent a recommendation one way or the other, but rather restates what's in the application and sets forth what must be demonstrated by the applicant tonight. There's been one email, I'm sorry, one letter received in support that was received today and Dave Walton distributed that to council members. The hearing will begin with the presentation of the case by the applicant. And the applicant can please note that the council has had the opportunity to review your materials in advance. So you don't need to restate everything that's in your application, but please feel free to address what you'd like. After that, the council will ask its questions of the applicant and/or staff. Following those questions, anyone else attending the hearing who'd like to make a comment will have the opportunity to do so, either in support or opposition. Then the applicant will be given an opportunity for brief rebuttal. The record will close. The council will deliberate and entertain a motion directing me to prepare a decision. The decision is not final until it's reduced to writing. Usually a, a process that, that takes around a week to two weeks. So if the request is granted, please know you can't get that permit until the variance decision's been issued. So with that, we can turn it to the applicant.
Hi, Ron.
Right.
Thank you.
Please, go ahead.
Thanks very much. And I have with me my sister, Evan Thea Lambra Coplis, and we're co-owners of the home and longtime residents of the town. We had hoped to be there in person, but both got diagnosed with COVID over the weekend. So.
Thank you for staying at home.
We appreciate the opportunity and we'll try, I, I'll try not to.
Very good for someone who has COVID, though. I have to say, I'm very impressed. You look very cheerful and ruddy.
I recommend vaccines and boosters, the Omicron booster. I think that's, that's getting us through. Um, as Ron indicated, we've been working with Ron and Dave Walton on this for some time. We've laid out in the, or at least Dave has laid out, um, our reasoning for requesting the variance here. We think we meet all the criteria that the town has set forth for granting a variance for the replacement fence that we proposed, but let me hit on some of the highlights. Um, as I said, we're long-term residents of the town. Um, the house is a corner lot at the corner of Stanford and East Avenue. And like virtually every, um, corner house on East Avenue with one exception, um, has a fenced-in rear yard, which the town considers a front yard. And, um, the fence was, um, installed. It's a chain link fence, which is ugly and um, is damaged due to a storm and it's falling apart. But it was installed by a prior owner pursuant to a town and a county permit in the late nineteen eighties at a time where we presume that, um, the town did not consider this a front yard. Nevertheless, um, we understand that we have to get a variance to replace this chain link fence because what our proposal involves is not simply putting up another chain link fence, but putting in something much better. Um, a cedar wooden fence, wing gate style, six feet tall, which is the same height, same location. The first foot is basically a lattice topper and then the remainder of five feet of the fence, um, consists of staggered boards that provide um, some visibility into the backyard. And all of this would be screened by the existing four-foot hedge that we will not be replacing. Our reasons are, are multiple for seeking, um, this fence. Really, we are seeking to get the same level of privacy that our neighbors, um, have been accorded as well throughout the town and on this street. Our home is in an unusual location in that it is, um, the rear yard is, is street level, sidewalk level. We get multiple trespassers. We have people throwing trash into the hedge. Um, and essentially there is no privacy back there without a fence. And so we need something fenced off there. And what we have there is a fence, but it's falling apart. And our landscapers have pretty much jerry-rigged a way to keep it up there, but we'd like to go forward with the project to install something better. So location is not going to change, height is not going to change, and it's still going to be a semi-private fence uh, with visibility into the backyard, um, screened by a hedge. Um, it would not be possible or practical to install a fence that follows the line, the rear house line. We've got a deck that is right up against the rear house line. And because of the fifty width, um, uh, size of the rear yard, um, a fence that is placed in that fashion would essentially bisect our rear yard. So that is not a practical solution for us. We believe that we would be conforming. Uh, it would be impractical, therefore it's conform to the town's, Evan, um, the town's ordinance prohibiting front yard fences. Um, we have, as I said, a lot of foot traffic, heavy, heavy vehicle traffic. We have buses, the school buses just idle right outside, um, our yard. Um, trucks, construction trucks, leaf trucks, you name it. They just idle all day. Um, and, um, a fence is essentially vital to the enjoyment of our property. It, this is not a proposal that would affect anybody, really anybody else. Um, two of the properties are, that are joining this town are actually owned by my sister and I. We, we were raised, as I said, in the town, um, and we maintain all three properties. Um, and we're not aware of any objection to this. Um, I'm aware of the one letter in support that was received and certainly grateful to Mr. Marcus for sending that letter in. I think he's raises a couple of issues that we certainly are welcome to address. But, um, we're not aware of anyone opposing this. And in fact, the fence is essentially, um, a, a more open, uh, style than many of the stockade fences that are currently um, on this street in front yard, um, corner lots going all the way down East Avenue. Several of the houses have picket fences. Um, there's one other house with a chailing fence and then all the other houses have, um, stockade board-on-board fences. So this is a much more open fence. We looked around the, the town. We've done our walks. And this is much more open than many of the front yard fences that have been permitted even through a variance in the town. So we think that's consistent. Um, we think this is the minimum necessary to overcome.
Please interrupt. We, we, I'm sorry, but we have read, we have read the file, so it's okay. You don't have to read everything. You just want to, I think we've heard your summary. Or is there anything else you wish to really stress? Because otherwise we, we do, we have read the file.
I'm aware of that, but I wanted to at least hit the highlights for the record.
Right.
And I appreciate that opportunity to do that, but I'm certainly here and my sister's here and we're available to respond to any questions that you may have. We really do want to move forward on this, um, because we're basically holding up completion of, of this, uh, pending, uh, disposition on our variance application.
Good. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your presentation. Do my colleagues have any questions? Joy?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have a question of, of staff. Um, so Dave, um, if I may ask you, um, you know, when I, when I was looking at this, and I have walked by this property many times, um, I really hate, uh, chain link fence. Um, so any opportunity to replace it with something else, in my opinion, is great, but my opinion doesn't really matter if, if we have to rule according to the law in this case. So I just want to ask you, um, or just to verify that we, a variance is required because under normal circumstances, they wouldn't be able to put a fence there, even though there is already a fence there, correct?
Correct. Um, there are several things in play. So the existing fence is developmentally non-conforming. Um, the town code would allow it to be replaced in kind.
So you could replace it with another chain link fence?
Correct. Um, you can replace it in the same location at the same height if the fenestration is not decreased. Um, and that's where this fence runs into trouble is because the openness of this fence is less than the openness of the chain link fence.
Correct. Okay. So then there are two issues. One is the fenestration and the second is the height and location, right?
Yeah, for, I mean, for this fence, the height and location would be fine if it was a like replacement or in kind replacement. But the fenestration is the only thing that's keeping this from being able to be approved.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I have one. Uh, just want to make sure. You're also planning to put a screen of vegetation, um, shrubs or, or something in front of this fence. Is that correct?
We're not planning to put something in. There's a fence that has been there for more than fifty years, a, a hedge that's four foot high. Um, and we.
That hedge will stay. That hedge will stay. The hedge will stay.
The hedge will stay.
Okay.
It's beautiful. It costs us thousands of dollars to maintain it, but it will stay. There's that. And then we've included that in our application as well.
Okay, good. All right. Um, for the general public, are there any questions or comments that anybody wishes to make? Okay, then it comes back to us for discussion. Any discussion or move to a vote? What would, you want to have any comments? Joel?
Yeah, no, uh, thanks, Mayor Rush. Um, so I, I, uh, live down the block or two on the east and we grandfathered in a fence, bought the house, had the fence in there, uh, and value it quite, uh, significantly. Uh, being that, that is covering the backyard, but the backyard would be on the street. So, um, you know, I, I find this to be a reasonable request.
Okay. Is there a motion then to approve the variance?
I move that we approve this variance.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Rich? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Enjoy your fence.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time tonight and, and the staff's time working with us.
And I hope you feel better soon.
Thank you. I will. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Very good. Good night. Okay, um, with that, we now, um, will move on to our council discussions, which we have several that we need to spend some time on tonight. Um, the first is discussion of the Corso Chevy Chase redevelopment. And, um, uh, my colleagues have, uh, a draft letter which, um, I prepared based off of the meeting that, that, um, Rich and I had the other night with the, uh, special committee. Uh, and I think, um, we also took into account the comments that we've received, both the two letters that, uh, where we, from Adam and from Anne, but also some other comments that we received. Um, and, um, before you was a draft letter, which, uh, I would certainly welcome your comments and thoughts about. But just for the benefit of other people on the phone, uh, the focus of this letter is basically to say, look, that as the plans currently exist, the town does not support them. Uh, that the building height issue has to be resolved and, and has to, uh, taken into account our strong position of four floors on all perimeter buildings. Uh, we also point out, uh, and that is pertinent here, that they actually raised uh, the western wing of the southeast building by a floor. It had been four floors and they raised it to five. Uh, we found that particularly, uh, you know, un, unreasonable. And also something which they did not point out to us, we had to figure out ourselves, looking carefully at the pictures. Um, we also take up the point, uh, that, um, is, um, let's see, I try to get it here. Um, the, um, uh, public path, that we do not want that little jet piece to come out to Connecticut. The path has to curve around the building and go into the main entrance. On parking, we're asking further, much further, more careful analysis. They gave us a very general response. Uh, that, uh, was frankly very superficial, but didn't really break down the different components of who are the employees, who, how many of them will be driving, how many visitors they expect, how many residents have cars and build up an actual analysis. They haven't done that yet, or at least not shown it to us. Traffic, uh, I appreciated very much the point that was initially made in the. Traffic, I appreciated very much the point that was initially made in the letter that we received from you, Ann, that the underlying traffic analysis that showed that an L A T R was not necessary seemed very flawed by assuming that the 4H Conference Center was run as a busy hotel. And on that basis, they were able to determine that the traffic going to a retirement community would be less than what had gone to a hotel. And that also was a good point that was made in the meeting that we had with the special committee. We also point out that we want to pay very careful attention to the trees in forest conservation area, make sure we minimize the number of trees that are coming down. And on the stormwater management, we've noted that they really plan to use solely the pipe that leads down to Meadow Avenue, whereas right now there are two, one to Meadow, the other to Thorn Apple. Obviously, the water that goes down Thorn Apple also ends up in the pipe under Meadow in due course, but we just want to reemphasize the importance to us that the stormwater management system has to be one that does not stress out the system the town currently has. And then we close again with a statement saying that we cannot support these plans unless changes are made. So that's the gist of the letter. I don't want to do wordsmithing tonight, obviously, but I want to take up if there are any major comments or thoughts, any wordsmithing I'm glad to take, but just send it to me. But I do want to make sure that, see if there's consensus for the basic points of the letter.
I do have a question. So the, the letter will go back to Corso.
The letter has to be addressed to the planning staff.
So it would be planning staff. So really, what we're trying to do is get, well, we thought we had an understanding with planning staff, and there were some changes of planning staff. And so now we're trying to get back to that same understanding, is that correct?
Well, yeah, it's a good point you're making. We had thought that we had an understanding with planning to support mutually four floors and the whole circle, the whole perimeter. And we had been willing to accept or go on along with their, what we knew planning cared about, which was four floors on Connecticut. Our feeling was that in the town, we didn't necessarily care so much about Connecticut. We cared about the other three sides. And so we did think that we had that understanding, and so we were surprised by the initial comments that the planning staff filed back in November, which simply said, gee, show us more studies. Well, that was part of why we, and I hadn't mentioned this, I should cover this ground. Bob Dalrymple, our council, and Todd and I had a conversation on Tuesday with the planning staff, and reemphasized the importance of common ground here, and made the case for why we believe the four stories is the right height. And we went very specifically over a lot of the different renderings. I should add, we made a special case that the height of the three, pardon me, the height of the livable, you know, stories that will have apartments in them on the northwest corner should be three, because there, the ground is sloped down and entire, basically the garage level is exposed. So if we want four consistently from the point of vantage point of where people stand in that corner, that height really has to be three, since the underground story is going to be exposed. So we went through all that very carefully, and I, I think that, and Todd can speak if he has a different view, but I think generally, they, they got it. They understood our seriousness, they understood how we were upset about the fact that discussions had gone off kilter, and that we were, and that they really had to take account of how concerned we were about the heights. I can't say, and I don't know what they will actually put in their comments on Friday, but I do believe that we were given a very careful listening.
And may I ask a last, I know you had a conversation with the, with our committee, the Committee on the 7100 Connecticut Avenue Development, and we have a number of people on that committee who have a lot of expertise in this area. And specifically, what I'm, you know, what I'm asking about is this trade-off that we know that we were going to face in terms of, you know, building heights versus how do they get the density that they had planned on, on that site? And was there any discussion about that? Like, you know, before, when we submitted our, I can recall, you know, over the summer and then early in the fall, we said, you know, we're looking for a wedding cake, right? Where we have low buildings on the perimeter and that they get, you know, they need more density that they, that the buildings in the middle of the property are higher. And they seem to say that, I thought, when we talked to them in this room, and that's not what turned out to be in the LMA. And so I guess I'm, I'm asking, one is, do we think that the, do we think we can get there with the planning staff? Does that seem to be their view as well? Or are they looking for some kind of a modified wedding cake?
The, we did go over that point very precise, very carefully, and it's one also that's highlighted in the letter that I've drafted, that there's opportunity for them to put more density in the middle of this development. Two of the buildings that we now see very clearly in the elevation, one is 25 feet high, the other is 40 feet high, so they certainly have room to put things in the middle. So we reemphasized that, and we also emphasized that with the planning department. Again, they listened, and they also seemed to suggest that there was flexibility there from their point of view as well, that there was more density that could go into the middle. So I think that's a point where they will probably, I would, I would, I would expect that they will concur in their comments, that they can put that density in the middle. And, and so let's hope that we see some progress on that point. Anything else?
I mean, I, thank you for, for putting the letter together and for getting the comments and everything. Wondering timeframes, like, just trying to figure out, you know, we do letter submission and response, I'm sort of wondering if there's a way for us to force a little bit of a timeframe onto this discussion with them and get it, kind of get some boundaries around, around any kinds of decision, change decisions that we can get from Corso ultimately. So we're going to the planning board. My assumption is we'll, we'll share this with the county council, planning, you know, subcommittee, and Friedson is the chair of that.
They won't look at this yet. It would be premature for them. No, I think at this point, I will.
He'll see it.
I'll check with Bob Dalrymple to see what his advice is. I don't want to be depositive, but my sense is that, that right now, it would probably be counterproductive if we went, in a sense, over the heads of the planning staff, because they have to, they have the right to have the first bite, if you will. And for that matter, the county, and the county council members don't even want to hear about this until after the hearing examiner has, you know, done their job. So I think it'll be a little bit early to that, but in terms of...
These planning board members are temporary still, currently.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, that's right.
So there is a council decision coming up about permanent...
About members of the planning board, true, but not about this.
Which is this transition part is created in a whole...
And to answer your question about timing, it is a very forced march. I mean, that's for us. I mean, we've, we had to put in our first comments very quickly, and we've had to put in these comments very quickly, because, as I say, they answered to Ann, the, the planning staff will submit their comments to Corso on Friday. We will see those comments, and they, and they will also, at that time, forward our letter to Corso. Then Corso is going to take until December 23 to come back with whatever revisions they are prepared to make at this time, to, in what is termed the second resubmission. And then at that point, at least according to planning staff, they consider, as they put it, pencils down in terms of asking for any further changes from the, from the developers. They will say, at this point, the developers have had essentially two opportunities to improve, change, modify their plans, to accommodate our comments, to accommodate concerns from residents. We assume they've done what they're willing to do. So now, going forward, we will write up our report, and we're going to be spending most of January doing that. That report then goes to the planning board sometime third or fourth week of January, and that sets up the public hearing that will take place at the beginning of February, and we'll obviously be testifying to that. So if we, so anyway, we will know on December 23.
Do we know?
We'll know what, to the extent to which Corso has taken into account the comments that we're submitting tomorrow.
One more question, Ed. Do we know if the report from the planning staff will include as an addendum our letter in full?
Yes, it will. It will in full. And they did that the last time as well. So, so our letter, and we'll probably send our letter as a courtesy to, to Corso as well on Friday afternoon. But, but the, our letter will be basically a document of record that will go with the planning staff comments.
It's unfortunate that this has to be sort of, you know, communication that we have to make.
We have to make, and I think, you know, to the point, and I think, and Stu referenced this, that we don't feel we've been, we don't think that our concerns have been addressed and taken seriously. So the tone of this letter is sterner. Start off at the top saying, these plans are unacceptable to us, full stop. It's not something that we've been in a position to say before. Anything else? Irene?
No, thank you. It was an excellent letter, very well written, and it hit all points.
Thank you. And we'll be distributing the letter to the town on probably Friday afternoon after... I hope you understand, just given the press of time, we did not have a chance to go through a full process of resident comment review on a letter. We, we had to get those comments and then deal with it, and I trust you feel we've done so with good faith. Okay, good. That's that. So we will see. And certainly, we will be communicating with the residents as soon as, both our letter on Friday afternoon or Saturday, but also as soon as we hear back from Corso, whatever their response is to our letter and the comments from the county, from the planning staff. As I say, that, I think they're supposed to submit it on December 23. That will obviously become something that we'll put up on the town website, and everybody can look at. And then we will be going through a public process to collect views of that, to lead into the town testimony that we'll be giving in early February at the planning, at the hearing, public hearing. Okey-dokey. Thank you. Farm Women's Market. There's a lot to report. First of all, since our last, our last council meeting, as, as everybody knows, we did finally get the necessary approvals of funding from the county to support and complete the financial plan. So now, all the, all parties have spoken up and committed $27.7 million to put in a, pay for the public garage of 200 spaces under Lot 24, and to make two new parks, one directly behind the Farm Women's Market and the other between, on the parking lot between Willow, pardon me, between Leland and Walsh. What I want to report is really two things. We're now, maybe three things. There are parallel paths going forward to work on, on, on legal documents that need to be entered into, and also a path for further design work, which will lead to a public charade process. Taking up the legal documents first, the general plan, as I may have reported previously, is that there will, in essence, be a series of bilateral agreements between two parties that are affected. That is certainly easier than having a whole series of agreements that a whole lot of parties have to sign, but we want to make sure that they're done carefully and properly. And we've also said that separate from those bilateral agreements, we think there needs to be some master agreement that at least states in one place everybody's financial commitment, so that we can honor the representation we made in our resolution, that we will be putting our money into a project where we know that there's a commitment for the full funding for both parks. We have, the two bilateral agreements that the town will be involved with are a funding agreement with the county pursuant to which we'll be sending the county $1,086,000 of our, of our money, which will go to help put underground some of the utilities associated with building, building the garage and a little bit for the garage. There will be a second funding agreement, which will be between the town and the Parks Department, which is where most of our money will go, and that will be to set out the timing of the payments from the town to the Parks Department to finance the construction of the two parks. We want to work on both of these agreements over the next couple of months. I think if we had a prayer that we could get everything done by the end of February, that would be great. We'll see. I wouldn't be surprised if it takes longer, but everybody is very active and working on it. We actually have already received a draft of the, of a proposed funding agreement from the county. We have generally found that, which I distributed to you guys the other day, we have generally found that to be unacceptable. Basically says, turn over this money to us. By the way, commit yourselves to not only four and a half million, but the five and a half million, because we want you to include the million dollars you're going to get from the state. And oh, by the way, if you don't get the money from the state, tough on you guys, you have to come up with the difference and still be able to put in, come with five and a half million. And by the way, if you don't put in all your money, we're not going to turn over the parks. So we have a few issues with that. But we still have a vested interest in keeping it simple, and I think in principle, we're, we, we are okay, which I want to make sure is all right with you guys, that since the county wants to use a lot of our money for the undergrounding of the utilities, and that has to be done first, that in this particular appropriation, our money would go out the door quite quickly. I think the thought that I wanted to mention to you, and I hope would be a sensible one for us to proceed with, is that our funding, whatever the ratio is, our funding goes in along with county money. In other words, imagine, if you will, there's an invoice or a work order or something that's evidence of work being done, that comes from E1, the developer, from the developers to the county, and then there's some ratio split that says, of this amount, the town puts in X, the county puts in Y. So we're putting our money in. We may, we may be putting our money in at a much, much higher percentage than is the overall percentage contribution to that full project. So our money will be spent maybe within a couple of years, and the county has to keep on spending. But at least we know that our money is going in when their money is also going in, and therefore, whatever review vetting process for the accuracy of the billing and so forth is something the county has to have undertaken, and we can sort of piggyback on their effort knowing that our money isn't going in unless some of their money's going in. So that's, that's the principle that I, I'm thinking about for the payment structure. The, the other aspect of all this, though, that's come out, is that, and Todd's done some very good work on this, the million dollars is not easy for us to access. Todd, do you want to give a very quick summary of this for, for my colleagues? If you can give a quick summary?
Very quick, yes. We received the million dollars in state capital grant, and we received the draft from the state, reviewed it, and are quickly realized that as the grantee of the grant, we obviously are not the beneficiary, and we have to list either the county or the Parks Department, or frankly, even the developer, as a beneficiary of the funds, since the, we will not be the beneficiary, the park is outside of the town boundaries, and, and we won't own any portion of it once it's complete. So we had, we were having trouble identifying a beneficiary of the funds, because there was also a requirement that we had to notify the Board of Public Works every time the land transferred ownership. And as we, as you all know, the land, specifically Lot 24, is going to be transferred multiple times during the development process. But more, more concerning to us was not necessarily that we couldn't address the issue of land transfer, but that we could not, no beneficiary that we would list would agree to a condition of the capital grant agreement that said you must comply with all state procurement requirements. And that's a very onerous undertaking. They would have to meet all sorts of representation requirements and, and competitive bidding requirements, and neither the county nor the, nor the developer had any interest in submitting themselves to those procurement requirements as the beneficiary of the grant. So as Barney indicated, we've gone to delegate Solomon to try to address alternatives to the form of the grant. It's currently a state capital grant. It could be potentially converted into a, a program open space type grant or some other grant that wouldn't require the degree of compliance with, with state procurement requirements as, as the form of the grant we currently have. as, as the form of the grant we currently have does. Is that okay, Barney?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think that's, well, we, there are a couple of options.
Can I get a question?
Please, go ahead.
So is there any waiver in the state legislation available by anybody to waive that kind of regulation?
I don't like it. Solomon is looking into that. That's, that's an option that we provide. There's, there are a number of options, as Barney noted. We could either seek a waiver for specific requirements. I, I think, in my opinion, that's probably unlikely. We could convert the, the grant into another form of grant, such as program open space, very similar to the one the Parks Department received from the state as well. It was under the local Parks and Playgrounds Initiative grant. It was a local Parks and Playgrounds Initiative grant rather than a state capital grant. And it, that, and that kind of grant that the Parks Department received operates very similarly to a program open space grant, similar to the one that we're using for, for park improvements, where you simply submit invoices against which payments will be made by the state. But Barney, if you want to go further and, and suggest how funds could
I'll mention that, the, we, as you, as you may recall, we have, of the million dollars, a half million was appropriated for this current fiscal year. The other half, right from the state, the other half is really a pre-authorization, which has to be turned into an actual appropriation for the next fiscal year. Now, we've been assured that that's going to happen. I don't know, I didn't press whether it's ever been not, not turned into, but it, but it's, you know, that they could not, you cannot appropriate the money a year in advance. You have to do it in the year. So if they're trying to give people assurance that there'll be more money down the pike, they do it in this way. But that does open an opportunity that if, if we find it's a hassle and we somehow manage to grapple with this first 500,000 and get it, one of the options is that the second 500,000 would just be turned over to the Parks Department. Now, if you think about it, we have a total of $3.5 million of state money. The state decided to put two and a half million to the count, to the Parks Department and a million to the town. We didn't ask for that. We, in fact, we were very surprised when they did it that way. At the end of the day, the second half million that would have come to the town goes to parks, but it ends up doing exactly the same work and creating the parks. Do we care? I don't think we do, but maybe I'm missing something. But I, from our standpoint, it sheds a, you know, paperwork and hassle. So that's something which we broached today to, in a call with the Parks Department, that would they be willing to have that money shunted over to their account, if you will? And I think they would be happy to, to take that. So that's one other option that we might look at. But overall, the goal of the whole thing is to make sure we get the million dollars into the project. That's, that's job one. And, and to do so in a way which doesn't distort or twerk anything and, you know, cause a whole lot of additional red tape or, or, or obligations.
Right. I'm hoping we can get the appropriation. We, we know the appropriate, the pre-authorization, likely the language for the pre-authorization can be changed, so the appropriation in FY '24 can be converted into a different type of grant.
The other thing that i- is that, you know, we want it to be in the governor's budget, so that it's not left to the legislature to write it in after the fact. The governor really sets the budget, dominates on that question ahead of time. So if there's a way for us to get it in to the governor's budget, that would be helpful. Maybe they could even slip in language that could ameliorate this problem at the front end. And that just becomes, rather than having the, the, you know, the legislature come in with a a change, it just is in at the front end with the budget request. So I don't know if we have contacts with state O M B to get to them and, and see if that's a possibility, as well as they draft a budget for next year. But that's going to be submitted by the governor. And he, well, Westmore won't be in until, what, January 16th or 18th, I think? So it's still Hogan at this stage, so it might not be possible. But, just a thought.
I guess I was
Because O M B could help potentially, but I don't know if we have links there.
On board. I guess our, our contact point is Jared, because he's such a, yeah, he can work that out. So I guess we want to hear his thoughts about it. But that's, that's where we are at the moment. We want to hear back from him, is sort of what is the easy, path of least resistance for us to get this money? We'll do whatever we needed to get it. That's really the bottom line. But there is one other fallout from this, which is pertinent in terms of the negotiation of the legal documents, which is, and I wanted to make sure I talked about that tonight. It had been sort of contemplated that of that million dollars, a half, my, half of it might be used to to, to meet our obligation to the county out of that 1,086,000, half a million would come from the state. And then the other half million would, would be, would go to the parks. But with these uncertainties and, and the prospect that ultimately the grant might be turned into a public open space grant, in which case it can only be spent on parks. I think it may make sense for us to simply say, look, let's keep this really simple. The million 86,000 will come directly from the town. We're not going to be reaching for grant, state grant money for that. So that whole sort of structure and how it's grappled with can fall out of that agreement. And we're going to focus the use of the state money, whether it's a half million or a million or whatever, into the appropriation for the parks. And I think that makes things simpler for us, probably make it easier to get to agreement with the county. So I'd like to ask her if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, I would agree to that approach. Simpler, it's cleaner.
Yeah. We don't want delays. We want to get this stuff done. And then the last point I want to raise about the park, just came about today, was that Irene and I, I know you couldn't make it, Joel, so I asked Irene to join the discussion we had, where we heard for the first time a presentation from the placemaker consultant that the EYA has hired. And they are, they're called Streetworks Studio. Have done a lot of work, a lot of the work at Pike and Rose has been done by them. And they've done a lot of other work in the county. And they have come up with a general framework for how to handle what is the, one of the naughtiest issues in actual planning for this park, which is how to address the entrance to the underground garage that they want to, that generally people believe needs to be there from the Willow side. As you know, the major entrance and the exit for the garage and where all the trucks are going to go in, it's going to be on Leland. But there's a general feeling that the, that the, that people using the parks are also going to want an entrance from the other side. They won't be able to exit from Willow, but they would be able to enter from Willow. And for all, for, for a very long time, we've always had and thought that that entrance, and of course, with a grade going into a garage, would happen right there at the edge of Willow. But that creates a very difficult problem of the cap, surface Capitol Crescent Trail, and obviously having cars turning right across the trail with bicyclists and pedestrians. And then those bicyclists immediately afterwards want to turn left across Willow to go along 47th Street and, and along Elm Street Park. So how all that was going to be worked was very complicated. The ones, the one flat-out requirement that the county made was that that whatever was going to be the entrance into the garage, however it was going to be designed, it had to be directly opposite 47th Street. They didn't want it any further west, if you will, because they didn't want kind of a zigzag people of traffic patterns on Willow where cars could be coming off it and, and going to garage, and then another 30 feet further east, turning left. And they, so they really want more of an intersection kind of framework. So what, what Streetworks Studio is proposing is that, and it's actually really quite interesting, is that the entrance to the garage would no longer be a slope down right there at Willow, but would actually stay on grade at the, at this wonderful Dutch phrase, the, the woonaf. So I'm pronouncing it right, Joy? You should be able to correct my pronunciation. Woonaf, woonaf? Is that close enough? Which, which generally is meant to mean a, a public place, which by and large is for pedestrians and is, is people feel comfortable crossing, but can also have cars at time to time. That's, seems to be the way, at least the term is being used now. And, and so the, the, the cars going into the garage from Willow would actually be a grade crossing on the woonaf. And then the, the grade down into the garage would actually be under the, the, one of the buildings that Bernstein is building, the one that's going to be on Lot 24. And it's a novel concept, it's certainly not one that I'm aware, and Irene, you've been looking at this for quite a while. I don't think that had come up previously in, in your review of this, if I'm correct. And they're, they're excited about it for several reasons. One is that it relieves all the congestion and danger issues at the corner of, of Willow. In other words, cars will still be turning right onto the woonaf, but they aren't going down in the grade, and there's not the same danger that we were concerned about. It also takes out of the park a really, you know, jagged scar, if you will. Because if you think about cars going under the grade, there has to be, you know, you need to, you need to have that exposed ramp and then ultimately cover it over the ramp, and that would interfere with a stretch that otherwise we would wish to be open between the expanded Farm Women's Market and entering into the park. So, and, and they're excited about that. But there is a drawback, and the drawback is that this means that there will be more car traffic on the woonaf getting into that garage. Previously, there wouldn't have been. So anyway, this is a concept at the moment. And I said today it was presented for the first time. You have some pictures about this, as you can see. But the, the, I simply wanted to, to ventilate it and, and see if there was any immediate reaction to it. I will say that on the call today, we did ask that, first of all, they volunteered, but we emphasized the importance of seeing the traffic study of just how many cars would actually be using that. The second, the second part, which I, I think is interesting to tease out, and, and forgive, forgive me for taking another minute on it, is what can be done to, at times, limit the traffic that would be on what I'll call is that eastern section of the woonaf. You know, it actually, it, they have to have this for fire entry anyway. And it starts on Wisconsin, and it goes up the south side of the project, and then turns in a right angle and, and runs along the, the east side of the expanded Farm Women's Market out to Willow. So that kind of L shape is a requirement. But the, what the developers offered today was that for events in the park and so on, other times, they would just block off the woonaf entirely, so the pedestrians could be entirely free and, and feel they could walk. What I, I was trying to get at a bit in the questioning, and I want to have a brief discussion here, is that is there not a way that we could think about expanding the times when the, the, at least the eastern part of the woonaf would be closed off to, to vehicular traffic? And, and one thought came to my mind, which is, you, the, if you can envision this, the cars that would be turning off Wisconsin and going on the south side to drop people off at the entrance of the buildings, that those cars, instead of exiting to the left at Willow, would actually turn right to go down the garage. But if they aren't, don't want to park, they could come right out of the garage and get onto, to Leland as a means of exiting the, the area. And that would give flexibility to occasionally close off the eastern side of the woonaf, full stop, without limiting the ability of people to, to drop people off at the residential complex or even to park coming on from that side. And, and it just seems to me that in our response back to the developers, my, my personal view, without having thought about a lot, and I want to make sure I hear from Irene, is that, yes, the idea has a lot of, may have a lot of merit, because it solves some very difficult problems, and it's good to not have this garage going down into the park. But we ought to see if we can press harder to find ways to, to minimize the vehicular traffic on this, especially this eastern part of the woonaf, because this is where all day long, people will be buying food, whatever, then walking into the park, and we don't want them feeling like they're crossing a city street. So I'll stop there. Please, transportation expert.
No, I just, just a comment. If they close that off to people turning right, what the consequence would be is that anybody that turned onto Willow would then go to 46th, make a right, and then go back down. So you're, you know, it's one of those, it's an issue that is, you know, you're, you're just displacing the traffic onto another town street. So I, I mean, it, they ought to just figure out how many people would actually use that, and then, and then, and, you know, and then go from there. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I mean, knowing that there's garages all around, it's really a matter of figuring out how many people would prefer to utilize the garage that's underneath the Farm Women's Market that's coming in for a bite to eat or something like that versus people that are dropping off residents. So I don't know how specific they, I would hope they can do the traffic analysis so that there's more specificity about, this is the, the traffic that we anticipate going through the woonaf that's because it's resident-related versus what we anticipate for people that would come and, and go to this expanded food emporium. That will help as well, because to Rich's point, yes, it might, you know, you're, you're squeezing one part of the balloon and, and then the other goes. But when you all saw with the, the graphical depictions, they're also anticipating people walking and biking and driving all on one very narrow passage. So that was, we'll see how it works out.
I'm sorry?
No, I, I No, I just think it depends upon the usage, you know, how much it's going to be used. And do you think that that, if, if they opened up the, that area in between the Farm Women's Market and the residential building?
That is, that will be open.
As an, as an entry.
Yeah.
That's only a north, that's only a northbound entry. So anybody coming south on Wisconsin would still probably be turning into Willow.
Right, unless they went to Leland. Unless they went to Leland.
There's a restriction on Leland from four to six.
Right, right.
So, you know, again, it's, it's the, what, what the counts are going to be. I, I, I just don't know how significant it would be, but
I guess the first word, well, let's get the counts. I guess that's where it goes.
And then there, yeah, there's also, I mean, I would argue that if they're going to have a major development there, maybe they need to change the signalization and have a, have a mandatory, you know, left turn signal, because there isn't one now, right? But there needs to be, once that's going to be like, if you're going to put 400 or 500 residents in a building and then some amenities that other people are going to want to come to, I think that
You're making a very good point, Joy. And actually, Irene, we, we picked up on this today, that there was a lot of discussion of the need for S H A to be involved, because they're going to need more signalization. There's no doubt about that. Irene, you had a very good idea that you'd want one of those signals where the traffic stops in all directions, so the pedestrians can cross all streets at once, which is something they do at the intersection of Arlington and Bethesda, right? Isn't that, that intersection is one where they, right? So there, there's going to be, have to be a lot of work, and, and we all know how cooperative S H A is, so. But I, but it's, it's, and your point about the density is, is important. Not only that, not only do we have these two buildings that Bernstein's putting up, but right across the street where the Starbucks used to be, Folger Plaid is putting up a 20-story building. And, and will pretty much go up, actually, I think go faster and earlier than, than this project will. And then you have the building that's currently under construction, that's just a half block down. And you've got two vacant sites on either side of that, so.
And there will probably be a lot more foot traffic coming through, purple lines, concluded.
Yeah, right. So it's going to be, it's going to be very busy. And, and yes, it's going to require a lot more signalization, and it's going to slow down the traffic drivers going through the middle of Bethesda. But I don't, you know, that's, that's going to happen. Okay, is there anything, any other questions, anything else you'd like us?
Just one other tiny thing. I think for us, we may also be challenged, and I'm flaking on the name of the street, and it's right near, right near my house, which is kind of embarrassing. But, you know, we have some one ways that we're going to probably have to look at as well, that will be impacted by any changes signaling going on Wisconsin and cut through traffic, and in particular cut through traffic and in particular, the loss of the cut through that the current parking lots provide. Certainly I know it's a Walsh, uh, cut through all the time through lots 10, uh, to get onto Walsh, to get into the town because of the one way on the street whose name I'm forgetting, which will.
Forty-sixth.
It's the little lip. So it is 46th. Yep. Yeah, that's a one way in between Walsh and.
Your points well taken. There'll be a lot of P S C work to be done.
That's going to probably need to be opened up.
Uh, and, and, and furthermore, the work of, uh, handling during construction, what that's going to mean. So this is, is going to be a big deal, but exciting. Okay. With that, uh, there's a related piece which has to do with ARPA funding. So let me turn it back to Irene and Todd to discuss.
Todd, do you want to take that on?
I'll take it. Thanks. Um, uh, to give you a little background of sort of where we've been on the ARPA, Towns ARPA policy and the use of ARPA funds. In September of, uh, 2021, the council adopted a policy to allocate the Towns ARPA funds based on requirements in the interim final rule. The council, specifically the council established a policy outlining a process to, to make and consider requests under the four eligible use categories that were in that interim final rule. Uh, three months later in December of 2021, the council decided to allocate the town's first tranche of funds to two eligible use categories, social and infrastructure programs. And the council acknowledged that the guidelines are not binding and the council can adjust those, uh, that the allocation uh, as necessary to meet changing demands, uh, for funding. In January of this year, the treasury published the final rule, which allowed municipalities to make a one-time election to receive all ARPA funds as a standard allowance for the provision of government services. Essentially what is considered or what is known as the lost revenue, uh, allowance. And then in April of this year, the council voted unanimously to make that election. So effectively the promulgation of the final rule and the town's election of the standard allocation renders effectively the town's prior allocation policy obsolete. Therefore, I recommend that we pursue a different form of allocation schedule that will allow the town to spend on the ARPA allocation over the next four years under the standard allowance provision. And use, consequentially use our, our reserve funds. As we all know, we have sufficient reserve funds to use for any future social infrastructure, environmental projects that were originally contemplated to be funded with the grant monies. The reason for this is that the timing of the special projects, environmental, social, infrastructure is uncertain, uh, and, and the timing doesn't necessarily conform to the timing of the obligation and expenditure of ARPA funds per treasury guidance, or the, per the final rule, I should say. This will provide us with the greatest flexibility for spending town funds on special projects and programs when they're either requested in the form of, for example, contributions to nonprofit profits uh, who have been impacted by the, that have been impacted by the pandemic. Or, or when such projects are actually ripe for implementation. Um, and reduces certainly the administrative burden of trying to track special project schedules and expenses against uh, treasury obligation expenditures, obligation and expenditure schedules. So it, it, under this structure that I'm proposing, the ARPA funds, the Towns ARPA funds, ARPA allocation will be spent on services for which we have contracts in place now and will have contracts in place by the end of calendar year 2024, which is a deadline for obligation. Uh, and the expenditures in each fiscal year will not exceed, will not be or exceed, be at or over $750,000, which is the amount that triggers a single audit requirement, um, for the town. Uh, if you spend 750,000 or more in federal grants and in any fiscal year, a municipality, a government entity is required to perform a single audit, which can be, which was on the nose to me, which can be extremely expensive and very detailed. There is an alternative to a single audit that is less expensive, but my uh, opinion is that why pay any money for any type of audit when we don't need to and we can put the money to better use, um, for service provision and ultimately in the future, special projects, social infrastructure and environmental. From a budgetary standpoint, there is no action required on the part of the council. Simply by April 30th of each year, I will report to the treasury that the town has expended its ARPA funds on contractual government services. And I will detail those services in the report that's due every, at the end of every April of, of, until 2027. And I'm proposing, and I can share a screenshot with you of the schedule that I'm proposing for this drawdown of ARPA funds for the provision of government services. Bear with me just a sec. I added the, uh, drawdown table at the end of the, uh, council packet, in my version of the council packet. So effectively, this is taken directly from the final rule with my modifications, but there are six reporting periods. These are the periods that are covered. The due dates for the reports to the treasury. We've already expended $125,000 for Wonders assistance in F Y 22. So in F Y 23, 24, 25 and 26, we'll draw down ARPA funds or ARPA allocation by 700,000 in 23, 24 and 25. And then the remainder will be drawn down for the provision of government services in F Y 26, leaving us a zero balance at the end of that fiscal year. Um, and we will have effectively used our ARPA allocation. And then obviously, as I indicated previously, we'll have the opportunity to use the, the reserve funds that we have for projects and programs that are, are, uh, in a more flexible way than trying to conform to the treasury obligation expenditure schedule when we know the timing of certain requests we receive or projects that we undertake, don't, don't, often don't and, and won't, um, specifically conform to that treasury schedule. So that's the presentation or my recommendation to the council. I haven't answered any questions.
So Todd, uh, I have a question. What, what this would effectively do is, you know, uh, and I guess Irene, you can also chime in. But for budgeting for F Y 20, are we now in F Y 23?
We are, we are.
Okay. So budgeting for F Y 24, that would mean that we would be, uh, I mean, we'd be $700,000 more flush, right?
So what I propose, the F Y 23 budget is a good question. Thanks. The F Y 23 budget that we're currently in, the budget shows a full drawdown of ARPA funds in this fiscal year. Um, we put that in there because we thought we might have additional requests for nonprofit assistance and we thought we might have enough projects, potentially capital projects to spend the money on, but obviously that's not the case. Um, we, and, and we have to be cognizant of the, of the, of the $750,000 threshold, um, for, for, that triggers, triggers a single audit. So while the current budget shows a full drawdown, it would simply be a matter of showing a drawdown of 700,000 in this fiscal year. And yes, consequently, the, the, the obvious, um, uh, result will be, it will increase our reserve funds by that same amount if we use ARPA funds to offset operating expenditures. But in subsequent years, what we'll simply do, Joy, is because the ARPA funds are still reserved, I mean, in effect, they're still reserved or they're not obligated by the end of 24 and spent by the end of 26, we'll still show them separately itemized as reserve, but will show that 700,000 in each subsequent year is being used for the provision of government services. And yes, consequentially that our reserve will increase by that same amount.
Can I, let me add one other thing that the, my, my personal feeling is that's important that we in fact are not planning to change where ultimately this ARPA money goes. In other words, there's a strong feeling of a lot of residents that, you know, this is our, we're all just the town and, and we should be using it for good, projects of the greater good, using it for the infrastructure in Coquelin Run is a good example. Wonders is a great example, but also in my personal view, using this money for helping with the parks that have been created makes a lot of sense. So I don't see that we are changing, if one, we're going to trace the dollar through the process and where it comes out. My personal feeling is it still comes out in exactly the projects that conceptually the ARPA money was meant to be for. What Todd is setting out is a passageway of that money, which greatly eases the reporting burden on the town and gives us the flexibility to spend that money over a longer period of time than initially ARPA permitted, even though as a practical matter, we may very well spend the 2.4 million by 2026 anyway, because money is going to go out the door for these parks. But just all, it gives us more flexibility. And you may recall that when we first talked about our commitment of four and a half million to the parks and we talked about whether we wanted to designate some ARPA money to be a component of that. We, we shied away from doing that because we didn't know for sure that we could do that. It was likely we could, but you had to sort of fit a certain window in the regs and, you know, they had to get approval and, you know, we'd have to get opinions and we'd have to obligate and spend and so forth. So in a sense, what this does is it simply gets rid of that reporting requirement. But it doesn't, but it doesn't change the ultimate destination of the money. And, and to me, anyway, that's, that's an important thing to make clear. And if we're having discussions with residents, uh, I don't see this as just, oh, we're just piling up our reserves. No, we're simply, we still intend that this money gets used in these other ways, but, uh, we are making clear that we're finding a, a simpler way forward in which to uh, have that money accounted for, what it really amounts to.
I, I look at it and pretty simply, number one, I don't want to leave one federal dollar on the table at the end of the time, so that it had, has to be returned to the treasury. And so that's the number one objective. Number two, with the uncertainty of all the capital projects that we've undertaken, it makes abundant sense to me that we ought to have the flexibility to use it for other operating expenses and not confine ourselves to those capital expenditures. So I think it's an excellent solution to a problem of making sure we spend these monies and get them spent appropriately.
And, you know, I would just like to, uh, request, um, that we, you know, so that for future councils can also, you know, adequately account for the ARPA grant, um, that we do track eligible projects. So even if they're tackle, technically not coming out of the ARPA pool, but that we do track, you know, so that, that, let's just say by 2028, we know that we spent 2.4 million on Coquelin Run, on Wonders, on Zimmerman, on Farm Women's Market Parks, on other projects that, you know, improve our own, you know, that improve our own, uh, infrastructure.
Ron, is there a resolution that's necessary here? Or is there any form of, of action the council needs to take to?
Well, we talked previously about, we, we might just want to, for administrative purposes, revoke the prior resolution that sets forth procedures under the interim final rule, which have been superseded by events, as you explained, Todd. But no, we, we don't need a, a motion to accept the the schedule that you've laid out. I can just proceed by consensus.
But do we need to, do we need to revoke prior resolution?
Yes.
So is that a prior question?
Yes, I'm by motion, that's all.
Well, I, I, it is, it is in effect revoked.
Right, it is.
So it's not, it's, as I, it is in effect revoked because of the subsequent final rule.
That's correct.
Yeah, it was, it was essentially rendered an annulity by the final rule, safe harbor.
Barney, I don't think your mic is on.
Now it is, sorry. Right. Okay. That's a fair point. Yeah. So what, what, what would the motion be? To revoke the.
Ron, if it's rendered null, if it's been rendered null, is there any reason they have to revoke it?
Frankly, no. I'm, I'm suggesting a motion, just administrative needed to clean things up, but it's, it's not necessary, really.
You say the council takes note of the fact that the prior policy is now null and void because of the change in the final regulations?
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah. And, and the town's election of the, the standard allowance for government services.
Right.
Okay, great. Then we'll just say it that way. All right? Good. Excellent. Um, the, um, before we go forward, I, I want to go back very quickly on one issue which Todd and I were texting about, which was, uh, Anstuk's comment about the depth of the buildings in, in Corso. And that was new information to me and I, I wanted to make sure, Todd, you said you have the graphs, the diagrams there?
I do.
Did you put them up? I, I, we, a lot of us looked at those drawings and we hadn't thought that the buildings had moved.
Okay. So let me orient you here. Let me just move my screen around so I can see. I pulled up, um, the, our files off of the, uh, of the Development Activity Information Center. And I'm looking at two specific ones, the LMA application uh, from 11-1 and the LMA application from 12-7.
Okay.
And I'm seeing a couple of things here that I need to move this screen. Hold on just one second. Um, this is the LMA application. This is, let me see, sorry, hold on just one second. This is the LMA application that was in the original submission with 16 binding elements. And this is the LMA, the, the floating zone plan, if you will, or LMA from the re-submission on, on 12-7 with, um, 20 binding elements. And on this plan, uh, I'm going to note four setbacks. There's an 81-foot setback on Thorn Apple. There's a 185-foot setback off of, let's say Maple. Off of building three, off of Maple, let's say. There's no setback denoted for building A3 here. But there is a building setback of 61 feet denoted for building C1. I go to the re-submission.
That's, that was a November submission. Okay.
Yes. There's still an 81-foot setback off Thorn Apple. There's a 188-foot setback off Maple, whereas previously there was a 185-foot setback. Measured from a different point of the building, though, I would note. There is no setback denoted on the re-submission. On the original submission for building A3, excuse me, on the, on the re-submission, there is a setback for building A3 of 119 feet as denoted right here.
Okay.
On the original submission, there was no setback denoted for that building. But if I look correctly at the location of the two-story brick structure here and its overlap onto the pathway in comparison to the re-submission, I see no difference. So I have no reason to believe the setback has changed from 119 feet.
Okay.
However, I do see on building C1, the original submission indicated a setback, albeit in a different location on the building of 61 feet off of Woodside. On the re-submission, I see a setback of building C1 of 59 feet in a different location off of the, off of the southern property line. So that's, um, two feet. That it's coming closer to the property line. Now, I can't tell you whether or not that property line is plum. So if you're measuring 59 further to the east and 61 further to the west, whether, it could be the same because you're measuring from different points of the building and the property line may not be plum. So I have no.
We, we, we don't see a 20-foot. We 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 don't see a 20-foot change, which is what Anne had thought was the case.
I don't see any 20-foot change in setback now.
All right, that's all. I just wanted to make sure we reviewed that. I didn't want to leave that unexplored. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I would like to add one agenda item which I sent out by email, which is a brief discussion about Veterans Park. And Ellen Cornelius Erickson is on the line. Ellen, would you like to take this issue?
Glad to. Hello and good evening. Thank you. I'm reporting in as the chair of
It's like all times to hear your presence at a council meeting.
Oh, I missed you all. But everything's going well in the Long Range Planning Committee. I'm enjoying being the chair, great group. And thank you for being the adjunct professor on Monday night, Barney. I heard rave reviews. So I'm reporting tonight on an issue that has come to my attention. It's about Veterans Park. As you all know, that's on Woodmont. Over on the other side of Old Georgetown. Specifically, this is a project called 7820 Wisconsin. And it's not a new project. The developer submitted plans and they did not include the two lots that were purchased for the extension of of Veterans Park. So just to give you some background and where we're going, this has to do with the Bethesda Downtown Plan. And where we're going is perhaps if you're interested in writing a letter as a council to support especially East Bethesda, because as you know, they're just on the east side of Wisconsin and all of this, 7820 and Veterans Park. Planning is going on on the west side of Wisconsin. So just keep that in the back of your mind. That is going to be my suggestion at the end of the evening. And so as far as background, as you all know, but for everyone else in the room, four to five years ago, the Bethesda Downtown Plan, which is the master plan for Bethesda, was passed. It included many parks, including Farm Women's Park, as we've been discussing tonight. The Downtown Bethesda Park that will eventually be near the movie theater and then a new Veterans Park, which is what I've just been talking about on Woodmont. Near the Marriott headquarters. And the Bethesda Downtown Plan called for the new Veterans Park to be 0.5 acres and next to a new high-rise building at 7820 Wisconsin. That is where the 7-Eleven currently stands. So a week or two ago, 7820 Wisconsin popped up on the Design Advisory Committee's agenda. And there has been no public input, no transparency. And then at a second meeting about a week ago, a sketch plan was presented showing the layout of the building and the reduced area for the new Veterans Park. So in that sketch, there was only 0.05 additional area for Veterans Park instead of the 0.5 acres. So a significant reduction and that's what is so upsetting that there wasn't any public input or transparency. Uh, yeah, the plan that was prevented was the concept plan. It wasn't very detailed. And as you all know from the Bethesda Downtown Plan, there were several possible locations for Veterans Park. So one thing that we've found out since, and this was actually at the DRC meeting. There has been an agreement to sell the existing park. So the developer's lawyer has been working with parks and and all the players that you're familiar with. And so at the design review, the planning staff stated that selling the land and reducing the size of the park would not be in compliance with the Bethesda Downtown Plan. So that's where this all came to a head because the land is being sold and you have this property in plan moving forward and then the planning staff pulling back and saying, you know, it doesn't comply with the Bethesda Downtown Plan. So not sure what's going on exactly. It is in the rushed category, I would say. It's already at the concept plan stage, like I said. Next step will be the sketch plan and preliminary site plan. And that still leaves not enough input from the community. So it just seems like the planning department, parks department, developers have all been aware of this for some time. And there's just not enough transparency for for the rest of the community. We have a couple of questions as the Long Range Planning Committee. First is why didn't this project come before the Implementation Advisory Committee? Second is will the proceeds of the sale of park land go into the PIP fund? And third, when will the meeting with the parks department be? I just got an email today from Amanda Farber and she's with East Bethesda. This was addressed to Midi Segurito at Montgomery Park. So she has requested a meeting. She said that someone from the town could come. And if someone from Edgemore wants to come as well, those are sort of the surrounding communities that could perhaps get some attention of planning and parks and and Friedson is the liaison on the county council. You know, the town and so we we don't have a date for that meeting yet, but that's in the works as well. Our third question is, our fourth question is, someone from Montgomery County talks with the owners of the small buildings on Woodmont. So if this plan of selling Veterans Park and changing the Bethesda Master Plan goes through, you know, what's next? Where are we going to get this half acre of green space that was agreed to? And then finally, can the town of Chevy Chase write a letter of support? And that could be to parks, planning, county council, and try to get some more transparency and opportunity for community input. And perhaps, you know, maybe they could even delay the sale of the park for another month or something. You know, we're not sure where these timelines have come from. Perhaps they're arbitrary and if they could just put off the closing for another month, that would give some opportunity for transparency. Any questions?
Yeah, I I've got one. Did I? Did I understand you? That the planning staff objects to the the conceptual plan? That they were they were said it doesn't I mean, if the
Does not comply with the Bethesda Downtown Plan, yeah.
Right, so that has no that has no influence on the developer to change? I'm assuming
See what they Go ahead, sorry.
No, I'm just, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying. That's planning staff, they planning staff reviewed the conceptual plan and said, sent it back to them and said it does not comply with the Bethesda Downtown Plan. So is that in effect telling the developer that he's got to change the plan?
Uh, no, that that's not my understanding at this point. Perhaps at the next hearing that will occur, but for now, everything is moving forward.
I think the any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question, but you might be at the point of addressing my question.
Well, no, I don't know. Ask your question.
No, so so I guess, you know, so the ask, Ellen, is what we received at the end is that that we're being asked to support, you know, the continued, you know, or the reduced encroachment upon green space in Bethesda. And that, you know, the fact that, you know, we're making, we've we've made a very public and long-term effort to preserve parks here, we should want to do the same throughout our downtown Bethesda area. And so I guess as a matter of principle, if another community is asking for our support, since they've supported our efforts to create these parks at the edge of our town, I would, you know, as a matter of principle, of course, support. You know, additional open space in Bethesda as we continue to look like
I think that's exactly right. When I first heard the issue, that was my sense and you know, that we don't want to get involved in the details. We don't know the details. I don't know the specifics of this building and how much merit it is. And I don't know anything about what the options are for other ways they could configure park space in that at the triangle area. I I don't know any of that. But I just think a general statement of support that we care about the plan, we care about the plan being executed. We care about parkland throughout Bethesda, I think. And I'd like to think that that's something we could get behind very easily. And with your permission, we can work on getting such a letter drafted. But I I that's I think the level at which our support should be registered.
I also wanted to point out the committee had some took pause with the master plan. And if you want to include something about, you know, agreeing to a plan and sticking to it, and if you're going, if the county is going to change that, then there really needs to be a lot of input from the community.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point too, because that's also crucial for us. I mean, we have a whole charade process ahead of us. But obviously, we're going to have vested interest participating in, but we know that other communities will also be participating in the development of the parks. I mean, this is you know, it's common. It's common space, right? So, yeah, that's a good point too, Ellen. Okay. All right, so the consensus will work on that. Obviously, I'll send a letter around to make sure everyone sees it. Ellen, I want to be back in touch with you about drafting it and all that, so.
All right.
All right.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Happy holidays.
Great.
Welcome. Bye bye.
Joel has to leave in a few minutes, so with permission, I'll move the agenda order around. Joel, you can speak next on the anti-Semitism issue. Oh, Joe Rubin has a hand raised. Ah, I saw. Joe Rubin, did you have a question?
I do, I do, regarding that last issue.
I didn't see the hand. I apologize.
No, that's quite all right. I have looked at this. I I've been following the Veterans Park thing a little bit, just a little bit. And the change is really significant. That's a part of downtown Bethesda that's been activated on occasion. And it it serves a large population. And this is really a sea change in the concept of what was approved to have been developed there. So I I think in my world, I would take a very strident approach to support what was originally approved. That's it. That's what I have to, that's what I have to say. This is really a big, big change. There was a big park that was approved there. And it's reduced to little more than what it what already exists.
Got it. Okay, thank you. All right. Joel?
Um, well. I mean, I'll try to be succinct. Short of it is, is in some discussions back and forth to do follow-up some of our previous discussions about the letter and and the public statement condemning hate and anti-Semitism, that we would essentially engage in this discussion, maybe put out a statement, a letter of some sort or a statement from the town council. And that I would begin the process, begin that organized for us. And that was the idea is to have the the blessing of of the council to get that process going.
True.
Yeah, see, it's a growth industry, so. Yeah, I said I was, I I was just on on the side, I I was talking with the Biden administration's anti-Semitism envoy the other night at an event. And the Biden administration just announced a interagency working group to counter anti-Semitism led by National Security Council and Homeland Security Council. So we're likely to see more public discussion rather than less. I think it's 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 good timing to have us weigh in.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Sorry to be brief, and I have to go to a work obligation.
That's fair enough. Okay, thank you, Joel. And I think we have very, very quick on the last two items anyway, because there's very little to say. And the, we're going to have anything further to report on the horn and bell policy. And frankly, there's not much action that anybody can take until the new administration takes over, we find out who's going to be head of the Maryland Transit Authority and 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 then how that will filter down through the other levels and, you know, who's going to be running the Purple Line. We have to, all that has to be put in place. So effectively, it's not an issue that we'll be taking up next year. And East-West Highway Crosswalk, we were so frustrated that we were just getting no response back from from S H A that we engaged our our friend Jared Solomon again to go to go to bat. And Jared responded with a text saying that he had had follow-up conversations with Derek Gunn. And that Derek had agreed that the signalization at that crosswalk, well, crosswalk has to be improved. Whereupon the obvious next question that came back from me was, well, when are we going to meet with them? And they have not yet responded to Jared on when they're prepared to meet. So as of now, I don't have anything further to report. And Irene, I don't know if you have anything to add. I just think we're they just stonewalled us.
Exactly right, exactly right. Now it's time to bring in the the big kahunas to to get this resolved.
Yeah, and I I'm, you know, anytime somebody says that they agree with, you know, their representative like that.
You take it with a large
Well, it's like you, it's like we had the discussion at the committee, you know, it's the way it's worded. And it's it it can mean a whole lot of things. I mean, he can agree that there needs to be improved signalization or improvements to it, but you don't know what it means.
Right, we have to have the meeting. So that's that's what we just have to keep on banging away at it. We don't have any other. I think the only the only thing we know that that can be effective, because this is effective in the previous administration of the Purple Line management was to call them to account during their budget hearings in Annapolis. The time when we thought we had nailed the issue on the bill and horn policy arose because our representatives asked questions at the budget hearing for the budget of the NTA. And 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 they were sort of so startled by the fact that they were being asked questions on the day that their budget was being reviewed that they kind of said, okay, we better do something about this. So maybe that's what we have to do with the S H A as well. I don't know. We'll just keep working on it. Any other items of business anybody wishes to raise? Okay, with that, thank you all very much. Have a great holiday and we'll see each other next year.
Thank you.